Call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors in our annual budget hearing. Would the clerk please call the roll to reestablish form?
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. And we're back on item two, the fiscal year 2019-20 recommended budget hearings.
Mr. Gill.
Ann Edwards is going to make a presentation on her budget.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
That's good. Thank you. So, good afternoon Chair Kennedy, members of the board, Ann Edwards, Department of Human Assistance. I'm here to present the Department of Human Assistance fiscal year 1920 proposed budget. And actually, I'd hoped to never have to make this kind of a presentation in my career again, but here we are. But I really want you to know that my team and I carefully looked at absolutely everything in our budget in order to make reductions that have the least impact to both staff and customers, knowing that there will be impact to both. What you have before you is our best effort at balancing those impacts, and I can assure you that tremendous thought and care went into this proposal. So, DHA has two separate budget units. We have an administration budget unit which covers all of staffing and operations, and an aid payment budget that covers all of the cash aid programs such as CalWorks, foster care, adoptions assistance, general assistance, and things of that nature. Our total budget for fiscal year 1920 is $745.9 million. That will include 2051 full-time equivalents, and the admin portion of that budget is $336.1 million, and the aid payment portion is $409.8. So, this slide compares the funding sources for the administration budget from 1819 to 1920. I'll be focusing on 1920. As I said, the total budget is $336.1 million, and that's funded by 54% federal, 35% state, 3% realignment, 1% other funding, and 7% general fund, which is proportionally similar to fiscal year 1819. Our overall federal and state revenue increased by $8.7 million primarily due to additional funds for some specific programs such as HEAP and CASH, the CalWorks Home Visitation Initiative, the diaper assistance program, the increase in the housing support program, and an increase for the SSI cash-out program. Additional funds are offset by decreases in Cal-Win and a net reduction in public assistance allocations of approximately $5 million. We also received a realignment reduction of $934,000. Our general fund overall increased by $733,000, and this was added back in certain community services and homeless contracts to avoid further reductions. So, of the budget, there's a county share of cost to all of our programs, and this compares those share of costs and the funding sources for them compares 1819 to 1920. In public assistance, the total for 1920 is $296.2 million with a total county share of cost of $17.3 million, which equates to approximately 5.8%. The county share is funded in part by realignment with the balance covered by general fund. While the total county share is only up $100,000 from 1819 to 1920, this increase plus the reduction in $900,000 of realignment resulted in an overall increase of $1 million in general fund. For the homeless programs and Mather Community Campus, they are funded primarily with general fund, which had a net decrease of $400,000 from 1819 to 1920. And then for community services and other is funded with general fund, which increased by $100,000 from 1819 to 1920. And the community services and other includes such things as South County Services, Area Foreign Aging 211, things of that nature. So, reductions. There's a lot of contributing factors to the need to make reductions in our administration budget. Those contributing factors are the net reduction in federal and state allocations of approximately $5 million, a reduction in the 1991 realignment that I referenced earlier, an increase in our allocated costs of $800,000, and an increase in our salary and benefit costs of $12.1 million. So, we are proposing to reduce in their entirety the CalFresh outreach contracts, which totals $300,000. It is important to note that there's a lot of outreach that will still be happening. The state is doing outreach. DHA does have an outreach team that attends many public events to promote CalFresh education and application assistance. And with an overall reduction in our CalFresh allocation, we would have to further reduce staffing in order absent this reduction, and we're already making significant reductions in staffing. And we're expecting approximately 65,000 newly eligible CalFresh applicants as a result of the expansion of SSI, of CalFresh to SSI recipients, and we're already seeing a surge in applications as that program became effective this month. And so, staffing is of the utmost priority in order to be able to process those applications.
Hold on a second, Ann. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, Ann, but could just back to the CalFresh outreach contracts for a moment. The, and I understand certainly from the budget materials and what you've outlined, obviously, that, you know, if you didn't reduce outreach, I guess you said you would reduce some of the ability in-house. Is that what I understood, that you would not?
We are reducing CalFresh staffing as well as these contracts. We would have to further reduce CalFresh staffing if we were not making this cut.
Unless you had a general fund contribution from another source or some other source of money.
Correct.
Okay. What I wanted to ask about, though, and I know we've got some speakers in the audience, so we'll hear from them, but it did come to my attention that with CalFresh, and I think that that's a net benefit certainly to the recipients for folks that are, you know, at poverty level, you know, some of the folks, if you're on SSI, you're getting $880 or $900 a month, and that's what you live on for your rent and your utilities and your food and your medicine and anything left over, I guess. Maybe you have an opportunity to go out once a year. But my question to this is, is that it's my understanding that as of last month, there was expanded eligibility for SSI, about a pool of roughly 60,000 people.
Potentials, yes. Potentials, yes.
Yeah, potentials, no, that's what I said. That was the pool that, and that, you know, the outreach, obviously, that can be done by staff, but I think through partner organizations, yeah, there's a cost associated with it. Also, as I said, there's net benefit to the recipient, but also this community because they're buying their foodstuffs here, that those dollars come into our community, they get recirculated. I mean, all the advantages of CalFresh, but the basic, obviously, is to help people with their food budget and to hopefully have the opportunity to, you know, have a much better palate for their own, their own self-being and self-worth. And so, the, with that expanded pool, potential pool, how's that been calculated here? Because that's brand-new, and I know that, you know, again, some of the providers that have been under contract are seeing a real influx. And how do we account for that? If there're going to be reductions, we do some in-house, but, you know, how do we account for that and make sure that people get qualified and dealt with timely and so forth?
Well, so, I'm not trying to imply that the loss of these outreach contracts is a good thing. I just wanted to point out that there are other avenues for outreach. The state is doing a huge outreach push particularly for the SSI beneficiaries, and by all accounts, it appears to be working. As you may recall, we had to close one of our lobby doors.
No, I saw your memo about a week and a half ago, yeah.
Because the volume and staff would account, attest to the fact that they are working very hard and fast to make, process these applications, get the eligibility, and get the benefits in the hands of those who need them. So, we are seeing a significant increase in traffic as a result of the SSI beneficiaries now becoming eligible, and the state's done a big, big outreach campaign push.
So, if our partners are working, you know, under contract, they help qualify folks, does it reduce the paperwork?
They help them apply. My staff have to do the eligibility determination and issue the benefits, but they do assist with applications if those recipients come to their organizations.
Okay. Well, I guess they're coming, they're seeing some of the numbers, maybe not to the degree, but certainly relatively speaking, that you saw in the lobby a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
Okay, well, again, we'll hear from some folks and I want to put a marker on to come back to have that conversation about CalFresh, so.
Okay. Thank you. So additionally, we are making some.
Supervisor Serna.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, just to maybe add to what Supervisor Natoli's mentioned in terms of his concern on the CalFresh contracts in particular, I note that it amounts to 100% reduction for all four contractors. Was there any discussion, Ann, about the efficacy of maybe using two versus four or split the baby the other way and maybe reduce by half each of the allocations for each of the four contracts? This is, the reason I'm glad that Supervisor Natoli said let's parking lot this for the moment, and we'll come back to it, because I want to fully vet this and understand that this was part of a very intentional campaign, not just, you know, probably three years ago in terms of really making sure that we're maximizing the best of our ability or participation rate in this county. And so, as much as I know that it's easy enough for all of us to make the proclamation that the state of California will somehow help us solve the problem with whatever new program or enhanced program they may have, the, if you look at the nature of these contractors, Asian Resources, Community Link, River City Food Bank, Sacramento Food Bank, and Family Services, these are, with all due respect to the state, these are local contractors that know best our local community and who CalFresh is intended to serve. And so, this is, you know, for me, and I know it's not for any of us on this board, this is not incidental. This is something that I think is going to do damage to our participation rate, something that we've leveled a very deliberate campaign to address, and I don't know if you have any response to what, you know, permutations of how to maybe cut in different ways or cut less was considered by your staff, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about kind of how we all arrived at the $300,000 going away.
Well, to be perfectly frank, with the CalFresh allocation reduction that we received, we were sort of grasping at straws because the staffing reductions are so significant this year, and outreach sends us applications, and if we don't have staff to process the applications, we just, we had to balance the staffing with the outreach, and so, we did not consider a partial reduction because the devastating impacts to staff right now are so huge.
And there's no way to retrain or have other staff assume some responsibility in doing this?
County staff?
Yeah.
Well, we could, and we do, I have an outreach team, a CalFresh outreach team that does go out to community events, and they take applications with them, they process applications at those events, and they educate folks about eligibility. So, I do have a team of people that does that regularly.
But this is an additive thing, so you reduce these contracts, and you're still left with what you just mentioned, so we're not going to be able to reach that many people.
You're right. It is a reduction in service, absolutely.
All right. Well, I look forward to hearing from others in the audience on this subject a little bit later.
Okay. So, moving on to CalWorks, we did make some reductions in our CalWorks contracts and our CalWorks subsidized employment contracts totaling $945,000. These were partial reductions, not complete reductions. We also made a reduction of $3.2 million in our operational contracts and expenditures, and the things that are included there are $1 million in facilities. So, for our facilities budget, we cut out $1 million, and we'll be focusing on bringing up the Greenhaven Service Center, and then focusing primarily on only health and safety items in our other facilities. We reduced $850,000 from our IT projects budget, which means we won't be doing enhancements to our systems or projects. We will be focusing on maintenance only. And then we also cut $1.3 million in other contracts. We had some consulting contracts that were helping us with our service delivery redesign, our organizational culture change, and strategic planning. We eliminated all of those in their entirety. We also cut the printing contract that we have with DFS. We eliminated UC Davis training contract, and then reduced our employee training budget. We will still be training employees, but it will be required training and not a lot of enhancement training. And then finally, we made some homeless, excuse me, some reductions in homeless services. We reduced $50,000 in the homeless point-in-time count because we aren't having a count next year, and so that wasn't needed. And then we also reduced $700,000 from the scattered site shelter program, and this is specifically for rental subsidies, not for the shelter itself. We did not nearly spend all of that this fiscal year. We won't even come close to spending it all, primarily as a result of being successful in being able to place shelter participants in HUD-funded permanent housing. Now, that may not be available next year. However, we all are also receiving $792,000 in additional funding from HEAP to expand the shelter program, and overall, we're receiving an additional $7.7 million from HEAP that will also expand the flexible supported housing pool, and all of our shelter recipients will have access to that flexible supported housing pool.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, if I hear you correctly, Ann, are you saying that the subsidy for rental housing for the scattered site program is essentially meeting the same fate as our housing choice vouchers, where you just don't have the interest expressed by landlords?
No. We, we have people that have need for permanent housing that we take into shelter, but we've been very fortunate in getting a large number of folks into HUD-funded permanent supported housing. So, we have found them housing through other avenues and other funding sources, which has meant we didn't spend all of that money this year. We actually spent very little of it, if you look at the totality. Now, I am concerned that those HUD-funded placements, there won't be as many of them next year because we've used some of them, but then we're also going to be getting the HEAP funding, which will expand the rental subsidy pool, so we will still have rental subsidies available for those who need them.
I guess I'm just trying to understand the nature of the demand or lack thereof for the subsidy, and it's, maybe I'm phrasing it the wrong way, because like, for instance, what we hear about the housing choice vouchers is that, yes, we have, we've assigned 1,700 and change in terms of the housing choice vouchers for people that were suffering homelessness, but because of the nature of the rental housing market, they're going unused in many cases because, you know, rental property owners don't want to participate. What I'm hearing you say, I think, is that it's, that's not sort of the case here. The case here is that we're actually have greater success on the permanent supportive housing side, so you're not having to put people into rental housing immediately, and therefore, there's not that demand. Is that right?
Yes, but we are talking a little bit of apples and oranges because permanent supported housing is very different than the use of a rental subsidy. So, we do have some issue with difficulty in finding folks wanting to accept our customers into their rentals, but we've had really great success, not good enough, but we've had really good success with our providers working with landlords and actually getting acceptance to some of the subsidies. But the reason we didn't use all the subsidies this year was because we got access to permanent supported housing.
So, let me rephrase my concern a little bit differently. Will this, the, with, will discontinuance of the subsidy, rental housing subsidy, mean that we serve anyone any less in terms of the overall intent, mission of the scattered site program?
I can't say with 100% surety, but I don't think so. I think that with the addition of the HEAP funds and the addition of the additional shelter beds, that we are going to, we will be serving more people next year, and I believe that we will have access to enough rental subsidies to cover it.
How will we make sure? How are we going to monitor that? I mean, because, I mean, we're being asked to consider a lot of different cuts, right? When no one likes it, it's a bad place to be, it doesn't feel good, but of all the issues that we deal with on a very regular basis, all five of us and you on an even more frequent basis, it's homelessness. And so, when it's proposed in the course of trying to balance our budget, a cut to anything that is associated with our continuum of care to serve folks that are suffering homelessness, you get these kinds of reactions, and the necessity, at least for this supervisor, to understand a little bit better how this is not going to do any lasting damage to the intent to better serve that part of our population.
And I agree with you wholeheartedly. It is, this was the last, the very last thing that we put on the table. We have so little unrestricted general fund in our department. It's, it's used primarily to match all those other programs I talked about in public assistance, and our unrestricted general fund, most of it in this department is in homeless services, and we made every effort not to go there, but within the dollars that we had to work with, we did not have another choice.
Supervisor, also, if I may, to your point, because I concur with you completely that we don't want to scale back in any way our effort at homelessness. The situation here is that we've got the money to use here so that we don't have any reduction in subsidies with the HEAP and the CASH funding, and we've worked with the contractor, had discussions with him about this, and I think it's fair to say, Ann, that there's concurrence that with the possibility of that funding, that this should be okay, but certainly it's something we're going to track during the course of the year because we don't want any curtailment at all of our ability to place people in permanent housing.
Let me ask you this, Bruce. What, how long will it take to understand that dynamic in terms of making this, if we make this budgetary change, when can we expect to have some clear understanding of what influence it has on our ability to meet the mission of the scattered site program?
Well, I would say, and I'll offer this, Ann, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but certainly by the time we come back to you in September, we can give you an update on this.
So, that's kind of what I was hoping you'd say?
Yeah, okay.
That we'd understand that a little bit better.
And ongoing throughout the year, too. We'll keep the board abreast of.
I understand that, but as we have done in the past, when it comes to something that is, you know, somewhat uncertain, we do have the ability to think about this reduction in the context of the fact that we have a final budget in September, and maybe if we see, for instance, I'm not hoping for this by any means, but if we see that kind of adverse impact that no one wants, I would like us to consider, if we don't restore it today, to think about how it might be kept in, you know, in some parking lot somewhere so that we can reconsider it in September if it's going to do any lasting damage. I'm not interested in being part of that. I'm just not.
No, absolutely. I mean, that, there's that component. As Ann mentioned, there's additional funding coming in this program, too, so this is absolutely in our radar. If any way services are going down, we'll be back in front of the board talking about this.
And Supervisor Serna, we track our expenditures and placements every single month in these programs, so we will be monitoring it very closely.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just one more comment on that, though, to some of the back and forth here that we took the 750 because that was the number that was there to capture. If we do as recommended, then it requires a restoration come budget adoption in the event that there's a change, not that you, I get that you'll look at it, but it'll be up against other things that may develop between now and then. So, what about the approach of maybe a step-down? Again, it has implications as to the dollar amount then you can reappropriate, but that just happens to be where we're at today, certainly in light of, you know, where we've found some, you know, additional dollars to supplement and/or to, you know, have us not have to go that deep into the general fund piece of this, but because there's a difference from what we do today and then what comes back in September. You can put it back in there, but then it gets, versus leaving a portion of that in there and then seeing how it goes, and then, you know, you can either leave out, you're faced with similar situation, but this basically kind of takes down to zero any of the additional dollars that were, no, that were in there that weren't used, right? You're kind of.
Supervisor Natoli, I mean, it's $2 million still in there.
Right. Yeah.
I just want to make sure, we're not zeroing anything out. It's $2 million's in there.
But you're backing out $750,000.
Backing $750,000. There's other money that we are anticipating coming in with HEAP and stuff that we are not, I just want to make sure it's not zeroing this thing.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I didn't mean to give that impression. That wasn't what I said. I just said you're backing out the $750,000.
It's $700,000. The $50,000 is for the point-in-time count.
Okay.
It's only, it's seven, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it's 700, yes.
All right. Versus 2.7 million, now it's 2 million.
Correct.
In the overall initiative.
In the overall initiative.
And this piece of the initiative.
Yeah, this piece of initiative, right, and to the point about where this, it goes to that permanent supportive housing piece of it.
To the rental subsidies, yes.
The rental subsidies. Okay, well, again, I just, I would concur that maybe we ought to take a look at, before we just back all that $700,000 out of there. To your point, it was the last reduction that, you know, and you're trying to look at where you could make those recommendations, and, all right, thanks.
I would only, I would only add, Supervisor, if I might, that just bear in mind the different types of funding that's in play here. We're dealing with existing HEAP money that's out there that we're allocating, where also the governor has $650 million in his budget that he's going to be signing this week for homeless-related services that we're going to work very actively to get a piece of. So, I think we ought to just bear all of these things in mind as we think about the possibility of these subsidies.
So, that's where I was going to go. I mean, so, right now, and as we know, whenever we do this annually, this is very fluid, and we're trying to, you know, throw a dart at the balloon, but there's even the potential that come September, we have more funding for a program like this than we currently do.
There's that potential. I can't guarantee it, Supervisor.
I know, but.
But we're going to be on it. I can tell you that. I'm working on it, yeah.
And, you know, if it doesn't happen, it'll appear in your job evaluation. Go ahead.
Making note of that.
Duly noted. Go on, Ann.
So, in addition to contract reductions and all the reductions I just spoke of, we have some pretty significant staffing reductions. We had to make a reduction of $11.3 million in staffing. We'll be deleting 93.5 vacant FTEs, and the chart up there shows the different FTEs that we'll be deleting that are vacant. The human services program planner and the human services program manager are both management positions on that list. In addition to those deletions, we will be leaving an additional 189 unfilled FTEs vacant. And of those vacancies, the management positions that we'll be leaving vacant are a deputy director, a division manager, an assistant chief of program integrity, and a human services program planner. I don't have the full list of the 189 positions because we're still striving towards that vacancy, but it will be a variety of positions.
Mr. Chair. So, Ann, just recognizing you're going to leave unfilled vacancies, you're eliminating FTEs that are currently vacant, give me an idea what that means to service delivery and to caseloads, recognizing obviously there's a number of contributing factors here, but that's 200 and.
282.
Yeah, 280 people. Positions that would have been, that were filled last year when we ended with budget, and this year filled or funded, anyway, they weren't filled necessarily, and so, what does that mean to people that are trying to receive services and qualify?
So, some of these positions were filled. We've made a conscious effort in the last several months to hold vacancies, anticipating that we might be faced with this because we, the last thing we wanted to do was lay anybody off. So, we have been intentionally holding vacancies. We're filling some mission-critical positions, but very few positions are getting filled. This will have an impact. I would say that you're probably going to hear from staff or labor today that they're feeling the impact already because we, as of May 30th, we actually have 186 vacancies. Unfortunately, they're not all in the right place in terms of where we have, where we need the reductions, but staff are filling it. So, there will be delays in processing applications. We, the time that takes to answer our phone will be a little bit longer. Now, we have very, very fast answer times right now. We answer within 30 seconds most of the time, but that will probably extend out to a couple minutes or more from time to time. The lobby traffic has certainly increased because of the SSI cash-out issue, so it will definitely have an impact on staff, and our intention is to work closely with labor so that we can work on ways to mitigate the impacts to the staff.
So, what percentage of your overall workforce in this particular area of human assistance does reflect, if you have 280 reductions?
Well, it's 280 out of 2,200 total, but that includes administration positions as well. I don't have that at my fingertips, so I can get it for you.
So, 12 or 15% of the workforce?
Well, it's 280, it's 280 out of 2,200 total, but that includes administration positions as well. I don't have that at my fingertips, so I can get it for you.
So 12 or 15 percent of the workforce, roughly?
Of the total workforce.
Yeah, of total, yeah, yeah.
Yep. So moving on to the aid payment budget, as I said, the 1920 total budget is $409.9 million, and that's funded by 30 percent federal, 9 percent state, 56 percent realignment, and 5 percent general fund, which again is proportionally similar to fiscal year 1819. This represents a total cost increase of 24.2 million from fiscal year 1819 to 1920, and the primary contributing factors are as follows. 16.7 million for the 13 percent CalWorks increase, the state-approved, effective October of 2019. 7 million for foster care, kinship, and adoption assistance programs, primarily due to the 4.23 percent annual California necessities index increase for fiscal year 1920. And a half a million dollar increase for general assistance as a result of the final grant increase approved by your board going into effect in January of 2020. These increased costs are funded by 3.7 million increase in federal and state revenue and a 16.6 million increase in CalWorks-related realignment revenue specifically provided for the 13 percent grant increase. A 3.9 million dollar increase to general fund, which is used to cover the increase to the county share in CalWorks, foster care, kinship, and adoption, and general assistance. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Supervisor Nattoli.
On our general assistance, can you just give me the caseload and what are our monthly outflow? What's the, what's the number?
Oh, I don't recall the monthly number outflow off the top of my head, and I think the caseload is around 3,800, but I'm going to make, my staff are probably texting me right now what the real number is, and I'll make sure you get that.
Okay. Again, that's all general fund.
It's 100 percent general fund, and the caseloads in general assistance are actually decreasing. So, which meant the cost increase for the grant increase is less than it otherwise would have been based on caseloads of a couple of years ago.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Anne, I know you're aware that we have some new leadership at Sacramento Steps Forward. And I believe we have scheduled ongoing discussions about hopefully the new day that's kind of represented over there in terms of them fulfilling their mission. Is there anything that gives you some semblance of hope that based on that change in leadership, we might expect to see some added assistance from Steps Forward in terms of Department of Human Assistance and our intent to continue serving our clients as best we can, especially in light of these cuts and expect cuts probably for the next three or four budget cycles in the future? And, you know, I say that and I seem to say this every year, ever since the shift was made to take about a $6 million administration cost at the depth of the recession and move it into a nonprofit model, Sacramento Steps Forward. But quite frankly, and I don't mean this to belittle their, their existence, their mission, their, their part to play in addressing homelessness, but it seems to me that this would be the time that we would really hone the working relationship between us and they in terms of our, our common purpose to best apply what we can in terms of our respective resource spaces to help people get out of homelessness. I think this is, if there ever was a time since that shift was made, now, now is that time. So I don't know if you have any comment on that, but it seems that given the somewhat dire nature of some of this, that we should be fully engaged to make that happen.
And before you answer that, let me say, Supervisor Serna, you just made the best argument I could make toward supporting a policy advisory committee that's made up of elected officials in this area to Sacramento Steps Forward.
You're nothing if not a great opportunist.
Go ahead.
After that, I don't think she can answer the question.
I know. So I am optimistic, absolutely, and we are partnering very closely with Ms. Bates and her staff. And I think the first really good example of success is this heap and cash funding that's coming our way because it was designed to go to the continuum of care, which is Sacramento Steps Forward. And with discussions between DHA, Ms. Kavanaugh, and Sacramento Steps Forward, we all agreed that the money should come directly to the county so that we can implement it. And I think that's a great first step, and I look forward to continuing to prove upon that relationship.
Yeah, it's going to be, you know, it should be obvious to everyone, but it's going to be incredibly important. You know, let's not lose sight of something here. We're burning through some one-time with this budget, right? In terms of the vacancies. So we get one shot at that. And, you know, we're looking into somewhat foggy crystal ball, but we know what's ahead of us in terms of, you know, some of the preamble that was mentioned by Mr. Ferguson earlier today, the litigation settlements, you know, the consent decrees and what expense that bears for this, for this county. So we've got one shot at using those vacancies to save us from the brink this year, but we're not going to necessarily have that cushion next year. And so I think, you know, while this is an annual exercise, this is about 1920, it's incumbent upon all of us to think carefully about, you know, at least the next three to four, if not longer, budget cycles and how we're going to grapple with something as important as homelessness, which everyone in this community has a rightful concern about. And I just want to make sure we are not leaving anything, you know, uncovered in terms of the working relationships with our nonprofit partners, especially Sacramento Steps Forward, when it comes to the import of this particular mission.
We are very committed to the mission.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost.
Anne, I was wondering if the Area 4 Agency on Aging will be covered by Michelle?
No, that is in the other community service program. So Area 4 on Aging is receiving a reduction of $95,000. That reduction is an increase that we gave them over the last years to create a surplus so that they had emergency funding, so...
Did they not use it? Is, is that what we're eliminating, funds that were not used? It looks like you were, you were making reductions from last year and this year, so I just, I'm not sure I understand.
The, all the reduction was, the total reduction was for a reserve, so we weren't cutting into the...
They were creating a reserve, so they would not by definition use it. It's a reserve. But if your question, Supervisor, did they use the reserve from last year?
It's matching funds for 5 million that they can draw down on, right?
Not cutting into that. What we cut was the reserves. We gave them additional funds last year for reserves so that they had reserves in case of an emergency, and we're just removing the reserves but not deleting the funds that allows them to draw down the match.
Oh, okay, so the services to the senior population are not going to be inhibited?
Correct.
Oh, that's great. I'm so glad. I'm going to be a senior someday, so we've got to watch out for them. We all are someday. Thank you.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? We do have cards from the public. Thank you, Anne. Okay. Gabby Trueho. Sorry, Treho.
I think these are all people that we're here to speak about, healthy partners, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Dora Dwang.
Just right here. Just in between the two. Thank you. Good afternoon. I am Karen Alvord, the CEO for Lily Put Families. We've been a longstanding child welfare provider with the county. And we heard this morning about Title 4E and the waiver funds that we've benefited from for the last four years that may be sunsetting in September, October. I just wanted to share a few concerns now. I know that at this point, there's still some heavy advocacy going on with both the state and the federal government to try to secure funding, some bridge funding. But the, the waiver has really been a success story for the county. We've seen foster care costs go down. We've seen permanency for our young people go up. We know that foster care is expensive. An average stay in foster care for, for youth is $100,000 per year. So when we're able to connect children with their family when they come back, or when they first come into foster care and help get them out sooner, it really does save some long-term costs. Not to mention, I listened through the hearing this morning, and there's a lot of costs that go into incarceration, prison. A lot of our youth, when they age out of foster care, are really at risk for victimization, for homelessness, for becoming part of our prison population. So I...
She said it.
I recognize that the budget decisions are difficult. I hope that as we get more information moving into September, that this board will look for ways to continue to invest in the services that have been successful rather than eliminate them if the federal dollars don't come through. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, Karen, thanks for being here today and certainly for your letter that you sent to each of us. I think it's important, and I, hopefully folks take note, that certainly Lily Put, but there are other community partners, and obviously 4E looms big as it relates to budgetary impacts, but certainly programmatic impacts. And I trust that throughout the summer, as either information comes forward, certainly leading up to a final budget, but even beyond, because, you know, part of the request that Karen made is that in the event that those, you know, monies aren't sustained and there are, you know, significant reductions, that we take that into consideration relative to relationships they have with the families. I mean, it's just, you know, funding my end, but they're, you're working with folks who, again, are at great risk, folks in the foster care system, and obviously families that are challenged and are trying to find, you know, permanency for young people of all ages. And so I think that it's incumbent upon us as a county and with our partners, particularly, but not just with the, the business relationship we have relative to funding and what they do, but recognizing that if there's going to be some sort of major shift and we're going to have to absorb that, that that transition, there needs to be some consideration, I guess, for how that transition occurs because you just don't tell folks one day that we're helping you and then the next day, we're sorry, but we're done. And I, again, whether it's Lily Put or others, and so, again, you know, I know Brit and Nav and others, you're sensitive to that, but I think in this particular area where we've made some great strides with foster care and with helping people get a real good, solid grounding in their lives, that if that changes because of the funding stream and we've been, and we're going to make, face tough decisions, then I think those decisions ought to be taken into consideration, how we then, we see some of the people that we're seeing, see them through, and then, you know, then we'll have to deal with what comes next. But I don't know if there's anything Karen you wanted to add, but I mean, I think you've stated it pretty clearly, but I, I took from this that if there was going to be a shift, it'd either be some, words been used, bridge funding, but certainly some transition, and obviously, you would ask us to try to find funding to supplement that, but in the event that wasn't the case. But I imagine your caseloads, some of those, you're working with families and kids that they may take months, if not years, in some cases, depending upon the circumstances. Is that accurate?
Yeah, and that's one of the concerns is that as we get closer to October, we'll need to figure out at what capacity, if any, we have the ability to serve because there is, when we begin with youth, there's a period of time, to your point, where we work with them over months to get them reconnected to family. And so we need to know kind of what, what that timeline would look like. One thing I meant to mention and didn't is this is one of the programs that was addressing disproportionality. We have a lot of inequity in our foster care system, and many of the youth that we're working with are older youth, African-American youth, that are most likely to stay in care and not have that opportunity to reconnect with family. So this is one of those programs that has seen success in helping us to mitigate some of those problems.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Strack, and I'm here on behalf of Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services. I'm here today to talk to you about the proposed cuts in funding for CalFresh Outreach and Enrollment Contracts. CalFresh is an important safety net program that helps individuals move out of poverty, increases access to healthy foods, and is shown to improve health and reduce chronic disease. CalFresh benefits are 100 percent funded by federal dollars, and USA has shown that every dollar in federal CalFresh expenditures generates $1.79 in local economic activity. It is estimated that if CalFresh reached all eligible individuals in Sacramento County, that there would be an additional $111 million in economic activity resulting from the additional federal benefits. Beginning this month, SSI recipients are now eligible to apply for CalFresh. This increase in CalFresh applicant pool has left the CalFresh outreach staff for local nonprofits busier than ever. Last year, our staff, along with staff with other nonprofits, have attended over 782 events in the community, providing outreach and application assistance at apartment complexes, at community centers, at food distributions, and community events. These events can take place in the evening. These events could take place on weekends, and these are also staff that are helping enrollment in native languages, not just in English. In a time of budget challenges, we ask that you continue to invest in CalFresh Outreach and Enrollment Contracts, as they have the potential to both help the most vulnerable in our community while also the potential to bring in millions of economic activity to this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Jaski. Followed by Amanda McCarthy.
Good afternoon. Chair Kennedy, supervisors, my name is Mike Jaski, representing Sacramento area congregations together. I'm a member of St. Mark's UMC in Arden Arcade, and I live in Supervisor Peters' district. SACMAC is concerned about the proposed budget cuts for homeless services and housing. The 90 positions that DHA would lose will obviously reduce the ability to conduct transactions on a timely basis, and the $700,000 that was discussed earlier is not fungible by the HUD monthly subsidy because that's permanent housing versus shelter. Those are not fungible sources of dollars and purposes. When I was before you in December, we applauded the No Place Like Home Plan, the big plan that you adopted that allowed the county to submit applications for more NPLH projects. While it was incomplete, it was a start, and one of its good points was there was an explicit commitment to end homelessness. We expressed the concern at that time that there was not an explicit commitment that the county would actually follow this plan in all its budgeting and program-making decisions. And unfortunately, perusing your budget document prepared by a county executive and his staff, there is no reference to that No Place Like Home Plan or its activities. All we've been talking about today are preserving the level of activity that you're doing now or marginally changing it around the edges. There's no discussion of how to get to the 2,000 unsheltered persons who are on the streets in this county. So you really need to do two things. Find additional resources to restore these sort of smallish cuts in the September budget and address the near-term funding that will come from the state through heap and cash probably in the spring of next year, still in this fiscal year. But more importantly, you need to embark on a serious, comprehensive plan to end homelessness. You need to understand how much money that's going to cost, whose, what are the actual needs? What are the costs of satisfying those needs? What are the possible funding sources? How can you collaborate with other entities? How can you each bring to bear dedicated funding streams or, and discretionary funding streams that each of you control and figure out how to actually solve the homeless problem in Sacramento? Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last card I have from the public, so I take it...
You called, you called another name.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry. That's why he's not Amanda.
Thank you, supervisors, for the chance to speak today. My name's Amanda McCarthy. I'm the new executive director for River City Food Bank, and I want to thank you for your support and concern for our local Sacramento community. Our mission is to alleviate hunger in Sacramento County, and we do this by distributing healthy food to anyone in Sacramento County six days per week at two locations, Midtown and Arden Arcade. I'm here today to urge you not to cut CalFresh Outreach and Enrollment Contracts. CalFresh is critical supplemental nutrition assistance that allows individuals to put healthy food on their tables and free up money for other bills, including medicine, childcare, and rent. CalFresh has an economic multiplier effect, as you heard from Karen.
CalFresh has an economic multiplier effect, as you heard from Karen. According to the USDA, every dollar in CalFresh benefits results in $1.79 in economic activity. Effective June 1, SSI recipients became eligible for CalFresh, and Edwards mentioned there are 65,000 potential new applications out there, and we are seeing folks in record numbers at all of our locations. My colleagues and I, affected by these, potentially affected by these cuts, are receiving more than 125 calls per day. We provided CalFresh assistance to more than 3,300 people in 1718. As Karen mentioned, we did outreach events for 782 different opportunities, and we assisted with more than 1,000 applications in the month of May alone. Canceling CalFresh Outreach and Enrollment Contracts for River City Food Bank and my colleagues here today mean current food bank clients, your constituents, and local business owners will all miss out on critical funding and nutritious food this program provides, especially given the rising numbers of people on SSI who now qualify. I cannot stress to you how important CalFresh funding is to River City Food Bank and the community at large. Cutting CalFresh contracts will hurt low-income children and adults, seniors, people experiencing homelessness, and individuals with disabilities. We urge you not to cut the contracts for fiscal year 1920.
Thank you very much. Now, that is the last card. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address this particular issue? Okay, Mr. Gill, I believe Ms. Caillhass is up.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Michelle Caillhass with Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services, and here to present to you the recommended budget for 2019-20. So, similar to our partners in Department of Human Assistance, there were several factors that impacted the DCFAS budget this year. In particular, we saw an increase of personnel costs of $6.5 million, COLAs, salary increases, as well as differentials for CPS social workers. There was a $4 million reduction in federal revenue for adult protective services, a $3.9 million reduction in realignment, and a $1 million reduction in state funding related to continuum of care reform due to a change in their allocation methodology. So, in order to present a balanced budget, our executive team got together and started looking at ways we could achieve, we could close this gap. And we had three kind of key priorities that drove our decision-making and recommendations. One, cuts that had the least impact to child safety and the safety of vulnerable adults and seniors, least impact to staff workload, and then also, to the extent possible, avoiding layoffs of any department employees. We also committed to, after budget hearings, and it's already started, conducting a department-wide assessment to try to identify efficiencies, see if we can streamline operations, and look at how we might reallocate resources to ensure that we haven't impacted any particular areas. So, in probably beginning of February, we began breaking down our administrative unit, immediately made some base budget reductions that did not impact services, and they also looked at some administrative contracts and reduced them to align them with prior-year expenditures. We looked at all existing vacancies at the time, and we identified those that we absolutely could not tolerate losing, that they would have too much impact. And then, we did identify some that we are proposing for elimination. We then looked at all our contracts and intra-fund transfers of funding within the department, and we again reduced some contracts to align them with prior-year expenditures. Those were contracts that primarily dealt with court-ordered or mandated services for families involved in child welfare. And then, we did eliminate several contracts, and I'll go into each area after this overview. So, this budget presents a total, total adjusted budget of $201.6 million. It's about a $4 million reduction over last year's adopted budget, and an overall 2% decrease in our department's budget. We proposed elimination of 55 vacant positions across a department, which represents a 4.6%, a 4.6% decrease in our workforce, and a decrease of about $4.8 million in salaries and benefits. And then, we eliminated or reduced contract services. If you look at the allocation of funding, we've got 1% of our overall budget in department administration, 24% in senior and adult services, and 75% in child protective services. And we have a full-time workforce of 1,142 employees. So, this is just an overview of our funding sources. As you can see, the biggest source of funding is our federal allocation, as well as state realignment. We also have about 9% of state general fund that is specifically categorical for certain services across a department, and we have $9.1 million or 4% of general fund in our So now, looking at specific reductions across senior and adult services, child protective services, and contracts. First, there is senior adult services. We're proposing a total of 15 positions to be eliminated. Again, they are vacant positions. Five of them in adult protective services, eight in in-home supportive services, and two in our public guardian conservator's office. It leaves a total still of 316.8 full-time employees. Looking specifically at adult protective services, those five positions include two public health nurses, a family service worker, clerical, and a program planner. The area that raised initial concern were the public health nurses, given my understanding of how they function in child protective services. And public health nurses in adult protective services conduct health assessments, they connect our clients with healthcare services, and they also help them secure durable medical equipment. We looked at our data, and over the last several years, the demand for public health nurse services within adult protective services has decreased, and our staff believe it could be related to Affordable Care Act and the expansion of allowable activities. There are some hospital or healthcare organizations that also dispatch social workers to people's homes to help them connect with services. We still have seven remaining public health nurses in in-home supportive services. That demand has not decreased, but there's more support that takes place over the phone. And there is capacity in those, for those public health nurses, and so, we'll be working with our staff, our public health partners, labor, to look at consolidation, so that we can use the public health nurses across a department. So, should there be a need in APS, then our public health nurses can also help in that regard. And then, we'll be keeping an eye on it. We know that our senior population is growing, and so, this, the whole area of senior and adult services, we've got a close eye on because of that increased population. So, one of the things that did come to play with respect to child protective services and adult protective services being in one department, is we did a different approach this year and combined one claim. So, the protective services realignment that we're able to utilize, it can go across both. So, one of the things that we'll also look at is, are we able to leverage resources that we weren't able to in the past? And so, again, as we identify gaps and needs, that will be an area that our team will consider.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, Michelle, again, you've heard some of the questions I asked earlier this morning, but, so, let me understand, then, so, with the adult protective services, you will have no public health nurses assigned to APS, you'll just be able to utilize them? I heard what you explained there. And the data behind that shows there's not sufficient utilization, even by one nurse?
There's a decrease, that there's a decrease in demand for public health, for public health services, public health nurse services specifically in APS. There's still the demand in in-home supportive services, but not to the degree that they don't have room to also address other issues that emerge for our clients in adult protective services.
And, yes, we have vacant positions, but again, we have turnover in lots of county departments. But this is an area, and certainly I mentioned this in my briefing to Mr. Gill yesterday and last week, is that, you know, incrementally, over time, again, not supposing that you're always going to have those positions filled, but recognizing the growing senior population, the at-risk subset of that senior population, some of the horrible examples we hear, people, you know, abuse, and obviously even we had reports on deaths, and then just the neglect and financial abuse, mental and emotional and physical abuse. And then, a lot of folks are isolated in that in itself, you know, as a potential pathway to being taken advantage of in terrible ways. So, when I look at five positions, however how those are calculated, coming off, you know, it was just a few years ago, the department was nearly decimated, and we saw some of those, you know, more tragic outcomes, so we built it back, and now, now we're taking it back. And my point of this, and again, something that, you know, put a marker here for our conversation, we get deliberations, is that this changes the baseline, recognizing that in any given year, we have to make decisions, but, you know, these came in onesie-twosies over the last few years, and now, with one action that's proposed, we take away five positions. Now, maybe there's a reallocation, a revaluation, but I got to say, and it's probably not different in a lot of program areas, I don't think, things may have gotten better because we have eyes and hands and people who are out there serving folks and intervening and preventing in some cases, but vacant or not, those positions could be filled, assuming we had candidates to fill them. And I just think it leaves our, you know, it leaves us in an arena where we're talking about doing a senior plan, and looking, and having, have had conversations at this board in recent months and over the last year, since budget last year, about another safe house, and how we're oversubscribed by two times for folks trying to get out of emergent situations, emergency and emergent situations. It says to me that, you know, again, with all the things you've considered, that this is not a very wise move on behalf of this county, in light of where we are. And again, we may have gotten some monies that allow for some outreach, I know we're successful, I guess, in getting some of that grant money, but it, you know, that was to place people out. But when, those numbers that you gave us last year relative to a safe house, those were situations that were so egregious, they required somebody being removed from their home, at least temporarily, in order to make them safe. And then, we're putting them in motels and such. I got to believe that, you know, and again, maybe you have stats, I didn't see a lot of stats in the budget materials behind this about, not just caseloads, but some of the cases that we're dealing with and the numbers. And if they're vacant, obviously, we're not serving folks with positions that are vacant, but you have the opportunity to seek and fill it. Once we do this, we've stricken that, and so, for a whole year, if not, maybe for a long, long time, we have a whole different base that we're dealing from here. So, I guess I'd just like to ask you, Michelle, in your evaluation, obviously, these aren't easy recommendations, but what's your sense about this? I mean, you've been doing work with children and families and adults for a long time, and I don't get, you know, for a lot of things we're being asked to do today, I don't get a really good feel about it, but this one, in particular, you know, takes me to the thoughts that, you know, we're going to leave a lot of folks, again, as I said this morning, that are voiceless, are not represented here in this audience today, but only by the folks that may speak out for them, or actions that we take, or people who advocate and intervene on their behalf. I'm concerned that we're going to, you know, and that this number's going to go every year, and this is not about just senior meals or getting rides to the doctor. These are about folks that are in abject conditions of neglect and abuse in a lot of cases. So, I mean, again, you evaluated this, you know, I don't know, how many people do we serve in any given year?
For adult protective services?
Yeah, well, yeah, and particularly where we do the interventions and, you know, some of the cases that are the ones that really require R.
Yeah, so it looks like in 1718, there were a total of 7,656 total investigations. The predominant number were for self-neglect and followed by financial abuse. What we know is that from 1516 to 1718, the demand for services increased by 10%. So, I share your concern. You're right, these were difficult decisions as we looked across the department. And so, we're going to keep an eye on this, as well as, you'll see in a minute, the impacts to IHSS. And so, again, there were 15 positions for senior and adult services, and 40 positions for child protective services. We tried to balance, understanding the increasing senior population and the complexities of needs served in APS versus IHSS, and then the public guardian conservator's office. They're really, they're different, very complex, and all going up.
Yeah, just on turn to you, because, you know, you, coming down from last year's hearings, talked about doing this senior plan, but when I see 15 positions in the area of senior and adult services in particular, again, being a part of this recommendation, it says that leaves, right from the get-go, the aura for the plan, leaves a big hole there, because these are, these are pretty essential services for, again, folks that are very, very vulnerable, and maybe vulnerable to their own self-neglect. And we had that report a couple of weeks ago about folks that had died, you know, at their own hands, basically, because they've been, you know, self-neglect. And again, I guess I question, you know, the merit behind a plan, if in fact, you know, we're in a mode where we're changing the baseline, not because anybody necessarily takes any joy in that, but, and then, we're going to come back and say, well, we need to do this next, because we have a growing senior aging population that has vulnerabilities, and yet, by example, this is one of the bigger bites out of this particular budget unit. And, so, I don't, again, I don't know all that went into the evaluation, and I know you don't bring this here gladly, but I do think that it leaves people much greater risk, and albeit for anything that we do here, a lot of them are going to be at risk in, you know, in even greater numbers going forward. So, again, I would just suggest that, for a conversation purpose, Mr. Chair, that we can put a marker here to have a conversation about this as well. Please.
Okay, so, looking at the reductions in in-home supportive services, there are eight vacant positions that we are proposing for elimination. And again, this one causes some concern, particularly due to the increasing demand. We currently have about 29,000 recipients of IHSS services here in Sacramento, which has been a 20% increase since 2015.
It was 4,000 since this morning, I think it was 25,000, and now he took it...
I think, I thought he was referring to providers.
Oh, I know, I just...
Because there are just a few, fewer providers than there are recipients, but our recipient caseload is going up. It could have changed from this morning, John. So, we still have 112 remaining social workers in IHSS, but this will be one of the priority areas we assess as we begin looking at where our gaps are and where we perhaps may need to reallocate resources. One of the, one of the actions that the IHSS team will do for now, and they've been doing, is prioritizing assessments and reassessments for those that are most vulnerable. So, we'll continue doing that, but we also are waiting for the governor's budget release next week. You know, great job that the state did in remediating the IHSS maintenance of effort issue. There's also proposed increased funding for IHSS administration, which could perhaps mitigate this area, so we'll just have to wait and see next week, and then, something that we'll discuss at September budget. In the public guardian conservator's office, there's a proposed reduction of a vacant social worker position, as well as a clerical staff. And again, we'll keep an eye on the social worker position, that's something that I'm hoping we can fill at some point, or find funding for. It serves in our CARE+ program, and they do an incredible job... of serving individuals living with mental illness, keeps them in the community, living with, you know, dignity and independence, and avoids higher costs of institutionalization. So child protective services, overall, we are proposing elimination of 40 positions. 22 are social workers, two are supervisors, a paralegal, 12 clerical, and three management positions. And I'll, I'll go over not every single one of them, but several. So the, the first one, the foster parent recruitment, retention, and support, that was like a three-year funding source for continuum of care reform efforts, the whole focus being on increasing recruitment and retention and support of our foster parents. That was eliminated in the governor's January budget, and so we had funded two positions with that. There were two positions vacant in our resource family approval unit, so we moved them over there. They are going to continue their recruitment efforts. It may have impact on our resource family approval unit as they conduct, as they do more approval of foster parents. The good news is, our recruiters have been amazing, both the two we funded, as well as across the division. But our applications have gone up, and so it's leaded, it's led to increased need. So we'll be assessing that. And then clerical positions, including two that you see up there in court services, were eliminated across our department. And that's going to be an area we will delve into quickly to assess if there's an ability to streamline operations. Our clerical team provide a lot of support for our social workers, supervisors, managers. They interface with our court in ensuring timely delivery of documents. So we'll be taking a look at that as well. Looking specifically at emergency response, there are 12 vacant positions being proposed for elimination. Five of them are social workers and one supervisor. We've got four clerical staff and two managers. You know, the, the first concern we all had is, how does that impact the number of new investigations our social workers receive each month? That when they get too many, it can compromise safety and well-being of children. So the, the good news, because I've been before you before over the last several years, where there has been a high number of referrals assigned to social workers, and it's been overwhelming. So back in 2016, our social workers were getting an average of 19 new investigations a month, which was really high, overwhelming, doesn't allow for the best social work possible. In 2017, we dropped it to 18 new investigations a month. In 2018, it dropped down to 16. And this board approved some additional positions in September's adopted budget, and so we added six more to emergency response. So from January through May, the number of new investigations assigned to social workers per month has dropped to 14. Additionally, we have a cohort of social workers that just completed their training. They've been taking a few cases as they continue training, get coaching and supervision. So they will slowly be taking on more referrals, which will, hopefully, we will be able to, my hope is, go even below 14. But that will be something that we keep an eye on.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, Michelle, you, you kind of touched on something that I, I wanted to dive a little deeper on, and that was understanding what these particular cuts for emergency response would do to workload, caseload, as you know, that that's been, you know, in front of this board since my time, since eight years ago, at least, not longer, and continues to be a concern. When you mentioned the numbers that you just did, going from 19 to 18 to 14, relative to themselves, that's a good trend. I don't know if that's necessarily still largely above the standard that's considered acceptable professionally across, for all California's counties and all their CPS programs. So it's difficult for me to kind of understand whether that's the appropriate way to, to consider progress. And secondly, what, what do we know about these proposed cuts, and what that will do, if anything, different to phone intakes versus field services?
So, all of these positions are in the field. There were no vacancies. So when we, when we did this exercise, it was vacant positions over these three days, understanding that once we got through and hit our target, we could then move folks around as the need dictates. There were no vacancies in our, at our hotline at that time. There were vacancies in emergency response field. To your question about is 14 good, it's better. The Child Welfare League of America, and you've heard this number before, recommendation is 12, no more than 12. So ideally, we would like to get to that and even below. So we'll be keeping, keeping an eye on that.
And will this, these cuts have any noticeable difference in, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe we classify our field emergency response in terms of a 24-hour versus a 10-day?
Mm-hmm.
So tell me about that. How's, how's that going to change that, that part of what we do?
So those timeframes are still in there, and so that's how we respond. We respond within two hours or 10 days.
We don't, so there won't be any qualitative difference in determining, for instance, because we're short social workers, a 20, you know, a 24-hour response is not going to necessarily turn into a 10-day, just because we don't have enough folks to respond?
Correct. We still have the oversight in place that any investigation initially signed as an immediate response, if somebody wants to override it and say, no, this is a 10-day, there's a whole staffing process that has to take place that will remain intact.
And then lastly, you, you just got done explaining that the industry standard is more or less 12. We're still two above that. We've made progress, as you noted. But what happens, and maybe this is aimed at Bruce as much as you, what happens if in the next six months, assuming these proposed cuts are memorialized here by this board, that we begin to see that number begin to creep up? I assume you keep tallies on that at least monthly, if not quarterly, so that we can understand what effect this, this would have. Then what? Then we come back to this, you know, in this venue and have a, you know, honest discussion about the fact we're going in the wrong direction now?
Well, what we would do first is look across our organization to see, are there any shifts that can we be made as we begin to see reductions in other areas? Can we reallocate resources, so without disrupting theirs and throwing them into crisis? And that's a balance that we always look at. And you're right, we do, we track it monthly. We know how many calls come into the hotline, how many are signed for IRs 10 days. I do have to give a shout out to our emergency response team. They have hit, I've got, for the last six, seven months, the 90% timeliness, above 90% that the state sets forth for timely response to referrals. So they've been, they've been working hard, reducing the number of cases open longer than 60 days. They're just, they're, they're doing some really good work right now.
Michelle, if I just may add a moment, thank you. To your, to your point, supervisor, as I look at these reductions, which, as you said, nobody really wanted to put on the table, but given our fiscal situation, we had to consider them, there are still 316, almost 317 staff that we have in senior adult services, and we've got about 770 staff in child protective services. So really, the question that becomes for us is, how do we use those folks that we have? Where should the emphasis be? So what our plan would be is to work with the staff to analyze that. So for example, is it a question of, in child protective services, putting more people at the front end so that those turnaround times you just mentioned don't get affected? Same kind of thing in APS, to supervisor Anatoli's comments. We are developing a senior plan. We are doing listening sessions out in the community to get input. The question would be, based on that input, how do we best use the nearly 317 staff that we still have? Where do we put the emphasis on those staff? That's really the challenge for us. I'm not saying these reductions don't have an impact on us, because clearly they do. But really, the fundamental question becomes, how do we use what we still have?
Well, to that point, though, how, how nimble are we, and how honest are we being with ourselves about how nimble we are in terms of if trends start to go in the wrong direction? I assume not everyone is going to be trained to do field emergency response.
That's a good point.
And so there'll be some, some kind of training involved for those that maybe are on the cusp of being able to do that, but just haven't been trained to the proper, appropriate level. I just think we need to, we need to have a very tight, precise, expected plan that's going to be deployed quickly, if necessary. If we start seeing the, the numbers going, creeping back up towards 18 and 19, we're going to be finding ourselves in the same predicament that we were, what, five years ago? And, you know, we heard all the horror stories from social workers that went and left for other counties and decided to do other types of work, because they just, you know, they humanly cannot be expected to do what they're being asked to do, especially in terms of the emergency response.
The only thing I, I think I was going to mention, supervisor, is when we talked about this in the budget context, we worked to retain some of the services that Michelle has to help that workload. So for example, we retained a contract related to transportation of foster care kids, so the social workers don't have to do that. Those are the kinds of things I think we have to look at in the context of our assessment of how best to use the staff that we still have.
Mr. Gill, what, I would like to suggest that we agendize sometime in the fall, assuming these cuts are, are made, a report back to, to get some idea of, if any, what trends are beginning to be influenced by these resource decisions we're being expected to make today.
I will add that prior to even knowing about the, the budget challenges, we were having discussions within child protective services about streamlining some of our operations. And we will be looking at just expediting that process. And that may, we believe, will help free up some resources, but, and, and, and address the caseload, the referral issues on the front end. So we'll keep you posted on that piece as well. So for the permanency services area, we are proposing a reduction of 22 vacant positions. Now, 14 of them are social workers, one is a supervisor, one is a paralegal, five clerical staff, and then a program manager. I will, so back in February, when we started realizing the budget challenges facing us, we were holding off on filling positions as, similar to DHA, we didn't want to have to lay off employees when it came down to the proposed budget. So 12 of those social worker positions, 12 of the 14, one supervisor position, and two of the senior office assistants, were part of the 36 growth positions this board approved in September's final budget. We filled the ones in emergency response and informal supervision right away, because we knew what we wanted to do with them. With the ones for permanency, we were going to try to do something different. We wanted to provide more supports for our foster parents, to help stabilize placements of our, of our kids. We were looking at how we could provide a different response to our young people that run from foster home placements, from group home placements, and resurface at our centralized placement support unit co-located at the children's receiving home. And we were looking at, we were meeting with staff, trying to get feedback about how do we best use them to also provide relief to our case-carrying social workers, not having to drop everything to run out and respond. So these were positions that we were still developing job scope and duties. We were going to have to meet and confer, because it is a change in, in job duties and functions, meet and confer with our labor partners. And then we slowed it up because of what we knew was coming with budget. So from a caseload perspective, those 12 social workers that are being eliminated never had cases. We've never filled them. Now, it won't allow us to be creative, but with respect to supporting our foster parents, with a new Mental Health Services Act program, the Sacramento Children's Home, just started a 24/7 foster parent support program. There'll be a hotline, they'll provide response. So we are teaming up with them to see how we can leverage and support our foster parents differently, as we also consider ways we can support them better.
Supervisor Anatoli.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, Michelle. So, I appreciated you kind of giving the brief history. So it was, you know, less than, about nine months ago that we were here, we were adding positions, we were on a pathway to reinforce work that we've been doing, to improve that, to improve outcomes. And here we are, nine months later, didn't even hardly get off the ground, and we've taken that, it didn't sound like you're going to, it sounded like we put it to dead stop, basically. You know, you mentioned one recent innovation with the opening of that center, but I guess I'd be curious, you know, kind of the philosophical approach here, that, you know, in September last year, we approved 36 positions. Obviously, we took that into consideration in the budget unit. We're now taking two-thirds of that away. And, you know, how's that being taken, I guess, within the department? I mean, you, you know, when it comes to, yeah, caseloads may not change, but we knew there was a need. You wouldn't have been here standing before us last year to make the case, nor whether it had been recommended through the budget, if there wasn't, you know, certainly a definitive approach that required, obviously, some investigation and a need, you know, a real need. And here we are, boom. It's all done. I mean, because basically, we're going to eliminate that, it sounds like to me. I mean, it doesn't mean, you know, we'll be trying to institute innovation. But the whole idea is, is to, again, improve outcomes for at-risk kids and to, you know, and to, to do that, and do it in a way that hopefully, you know, over time, over takes the foster system to the degree that we can, that, you know, basically we had this in place. And, and I guess I just find that disheartening, I'll just say that. Because, you know, you put it in the context of positions that weren't yet filled, but, you know, you embarked on this, and it's all over with this budget. I, I take that. I don't want to be too harsh about it, but that's right. I mean, is it, we're, we're not going in forward with that with the innovation, because you don't, we don't have the positions, and you won't be able to offer these assignments, no matter how creative you are. Is that pretty true?
It is, it is disheartening, and we will continue focusing on our, you know, mandates with our families. Our permanency team has done an amazing job of helping kids get out of foster care. And so we'll keep focusing on there. I'll share a few positive outcomes in just a little bit. But both emergency response is, you know, they've been working so hard on keeping kids out of foster care safely, right, bringing services to their families. Our permanency social workers have been amazing in improving permanency for our kids with our partners. And, you know, kids that have been in care for longer than two years, we've improved permanency that, for them by over 68% in the last five years. So it's, it's been impressive. We're going to keep doing that. At that point, they had caseloads in the mid-to-high 30s. They're currently at 18. They're able to do some good, good social work, so we will continue our focus there. Disappointed that we won't have this opportunity, but we'll look for other opportunities moving forward.
And if I just could, so regarding the funding, this, this is all categorical funding? Or is this general fund?
Oh, no, no, no. It's a, it's a realignment fund.
Bless you. So this is for children's realignment, for children's services?
For protective services.
For protective services. And was there a reduction in that this year relative to?
There was a, just under a $4 million reduction.
Okay. That's, you mentioned that earlier. I just wanted to be clear. So.
No, that's okay.
And, and we couldn't, we didn't see that coming?
No.
This isn't related to the audit exception? That was on, that was an APS?
No, no, separate issue, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so after we looked at the, all the, the positions, we dug into our contracts and MOUs and intra-fund agreements, and we looked at, again, those that would have least impact on impact on services for children, families, and vulnerable adults that our department is charged with serving. We were able to keep several contracts, including Black Child Legacy Campaign, our CPS cultural brokers, contracts with Child Abuse Prevention Center around safe sleep, um, safe sleep campaign, shaken baby prevention, mandated reporter training, and several others. We still maintain about $15 million in contracts. We also looked at contracts, realigned them based on prior year expenditures, and then there were some where we reduced funding to, we reduced a significant amount of funding to county council for their services within Child Protective Services. The contracts we proposed for elimination, you heard earlier, the one for Weave, the others were all related to training, consultation services, technical assistance and leadership development.
Supervisor Serna.
So just let me underscore what you just, what I heard you just say, is that the others that were reduced were more administrative in nature and not as, nearly as substantive as Weave's?
The ones that we eliminated, and then we reduced others that were direct services.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, in closing, while the overall elimination of 55 vacant positions is not insignificant to the department, as I mentioned, we're going to work with our staff, with labor partners, and our stakeholders to do whatever possible to mitigate impact to the children, families, and adults we serve, as well as impact to our staff workload. I do want to say that, I mentioned it a little bit earlier, but in CPS, our staff has worked so hard to improve outcomes over the last several years. We've adopted new practices that they've embraced. We've emphasized prevention, as Mr. Wagstaff said. We've kind of front-loaded a lot of resources to keep families together. It's better for our families, it's better for our communities, and it saves a lot of money. And then our, our permanency staff have been focused on getting children home sooner, safer, or finding a permanent home for them. So the, the stats since October of 2014, we've had a 29% reduction in monthly entries into foster care. We've had a 27% reduction in the overall number of children in foster care, and a 27% reduction in re-entries, meaning we're not just getting them home to get them home and reduce caseloads, we're getting them home safely with supportive services after. And then I mentioned the increase of 68% for kids who have been in our care longer than two years. As Ms. Albert said, a lot of the kids that are in care longer are African-American adolescents, and so we've worked really hard to have impact in that area. As Mr. Wagstaff said, we still have 384 remaining social worker positions and 770 total full-time positions in Child Protective Services. In Senior and Adult Services, we're acutely aware of our growing senior population, and hopefully, we will all get there. And, and again, as I mentioned, just the complexities of needs across those three areas within SAS. So we'll be looking at the flexibility of having one claim, Protective Services, to look at how we can realize some efficiencies and perhaps reallocate some resources. We'll be looking at restructuring our operations, and we're going to keep a continued eye on our IHSS demand for services and prioritize that as an area that we address as we come up with solutions. And then, and then last, I just want to acknowledge the incredible staff that we have in our department. The work they do every day to serve children, families, dependent adults, and seniors living in our community is truly extraordinary. And I know that we're going to work together, we've already talked with some of our stakeholders, we'll work with labor, and we will identify solutions that will enable us to continue serving our, our community effectively. So if, on that.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I just want to take the opportunity, Michelle, to, to thank you. I know that you and your counterparts, heads of other departments, certainly don't relish being in the situation that we find ourselves in, having to play a lot of, a lot more defense than offense, so to speak. But I appreciate your thoughtfulness, and I also take, want to take the opportunity to thank our county CEO and his staff as well, because I think they've applied an equal, equal amount when it comes to something as important as child welfare. You mentioned Black Child Legacy Campaign, and as was noted earlier in the general presentation by Mr. Ferguson, then that, that's one of the board priorities that really has been untouched here for the most part, and I think that's a reflection on the values, value set that we all share, whether you're executive staff or members of this board or nonprofit partners, about programs that are making huge differences when it comes to actually saving lives and, and changing lives. So I, I appreciate that. I do want to, again, stress that I think in the course of having to make some very difficult decisions about trade-offs, and that's what, you know, this exercise is always about, whether we are flush with resources or not, I think it's very important to really understand the product of the work that your staff does. I mean, it's measured in, in changed lives, saved lives. And to me, that's the most important measure of what we do as a county government, regardless if it's, regardless if it's here in child welfare and adult protective services or human assistance. And just speaking for myself, and we'll have a lively discussion, I'm sure, later about what to do about some of these challenges, that's really very, very high on my priority list. So again, thanks for not just your thoughtfulness, but that of your entire team.
Thank you. Supervisor Natale.
Yes, just very quickly, I certainly would echo those sentiments. And I just wanted to ask you, when you gave the stats, because you talked about reductions, just the, the, the numbers, what is, what does it equate to? Because when you think about changes in the foster care system and how hard folks have worked to better the lives of folks, again, who are in that system and find supportive families, when you say 29%, 27%, you know, are those measured in hundreds or thousands?
So specifically with respect to children in foster care, so we, we have a monthly dashboard, if you ever want to see it. But the number of children we had in foster care on October 1st of 2014, which is when we started the Title IV program, was 2,421, and we're currently down to 1,777. And so we're going to focus on continuing to bring that down.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks, Michelle.
Okay, I have no more questions from the board. I do have a couple of cards from the public, and thank you very much, Michelle. Sister Jean, you have been so patient.
Members of the board, I'm Sister Jean Feeley, and Executive Director at Stanford Settlement. And I think, as all of you know, I will be retiring in August, and I wanted to publicly thank you for all the wonderful support that you have given to us through the years. Not only you, but certainly all your predecessors have been extremely supportive. I've been at Stanford Settlement as Executive Director for 43 years, and I have been to the budget hearings for 43 years.
Almost as long as Don.
A little, a little longer. We were both younger when all this started.
I won't know what to do next year. But I think one of the things that's been very impressive to me about you as a board, and it's been this way for many years, is your real caring concern for the most vulnerable. And you don't often find that in a lot of administrative bodies because you're so concerned about your in-house stuff. But you all have shown so much empathy, you know, for the people in need. And we've enjoyed such a wonderful relationship with both CPS and APS, and we know that the work that we do makes their job easier because we're out there in the community doing the same caring and concern for people. So thank you.
Thank you, Sister. Thank you, Sister. And with comments like that, I'll give you an extra 10 minutes if you like.
After 43 years, she's earned the extra 10 minutes.
And I, I am afraid I cannot make out all of the name here, and I don't want to butcher it, so I will go with what I can see, and that's Chris with SEIU Local 1021.
Good afternoon, Board. My name's Chris Bolshesey. I'm with SEIU Local 1021. I represent the Sacramento County Welfare Supervisors, which includes Department of Child and Family Services and DHA. So I said, wanted to save my comments for the end because I, since I do represent both, I wanted to not come up here twice. So, and I want to express my appreciation to both Michelle and Ann in regards to employees' retention and, and not impacting those folks and keeping that workforce as full as possible. It's really appreciated because, as you know, it's easy to whack people because that's where the money's at. Representative Serna, Supervisor Serna and Natale, you kind of stole my thunder a little bit. You get it. The issue I see happening is when we talk about these reductions and we're using, you know, vacancies that we have currently, and we're not, you know, we're going to eliminate those. But here's kind of the problem. We were not even close to being fully staffed. We still had lots of workload issues that we're always working on. We're trying to do some leveling out of, you know, supervision of employees so we don't get that high 10 or 12 employee rate that we're supervising, and because there's like eight to 10 workers that they're supervising on the CPS and APS side, which is a tremendous workload, and the same thing on with DHA. You know, we're, we're trying to keep those workloads so they're manageable. So when I hear that, you know, we're losing, what, 300 and some positions, one, we're not close to where we should be at, and two years ago, I believe it was, I was very happy to see we're going to start filling some of our DHA positions, we're going to start having classes, we're going to start doing this. Because, you know, we believe that the social programs that we provide are extremely important, we support those. But the issue we have is, and I think Supervisor Serna, you kind of hit it, but if we don't have people to do the program, what kind of program are we going to have? You're not going to have a program. You're not going to be able to provide those services. You're not going to be able to provide the outreach to the homeless like you want to. So the purpose of me speaking is to push you in a direction of, of employees. It's not that they're, that they're important, the infrastructure's important, and we want to continue the program, but how good will the program be? CPS, you know, that a couple of years ago was, was one of the hot potatoes that we had because we couldn't fill or staff CPS. That's why you have the CPS retention money that the workers get. Supervisors don't get it yet, we're hopeful, but, you know, and when you talked about people leaving, that was, that was, that was real. That's why you had to, you know, invoke these programs so you could keep that retention. It's starting to get better, but as we foresee, we're going to go back to where we were. And so my concern is, how's that workload going to get done? You know, we talked about, well, we, maybe we can retrain some of those people, and they can do more in ER and IR, and we can redirect some of those resources. You can do that, but the problem is, where they leave, what are you going to do with that work? It's still there, still needs to be done. So if you just kind of play checkers and move people around, the work still needs to get done. So I'm advocating for, you know, no, no layoffs. We want to support the program, we want to support the, the consumers that we have, but we need to do it with adequate staffing. And I'm just not sure what this is going to look like when we're done, are we going to, you know? So like I said, I'm just here to, and I appreciate your conversations, both Supervisor Natale and Serna, your comments about what happens. And so I appreciate it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We do have a few, a couple of miscellaneous cards that have come in, so Kirsten Hendrickson.
Um, my name's Kirsten Hendrickson, and I've been a volunteer at the Broadshaw Animal Shelter for the past four years. I also recently graduated from the Cassimino-Servet College Veterinary Technology Program, and I just wanted to ask you to really consider, when you're considering the animal care budget for the fiscal year, I ask that you consider those on the front lines. That includes the animal care employees, the animal control officers, the animal care attendants, the customer service representatives, the veterinary technicians, and the veterinarians. Those are the ones that are going to be most impacted by your decision on this budget. Volunteers are amazing. They fill in the gaps that staff cannot by themselves fill because they're overworked. There's not enough staff to do all of the jobs, but those jobs are there for a reason. There's things that volunteers can't do that staff needs to do. For example, euthanasias, vaccinations, microchipping, all those things. And it's important that their professional skills are seen as valued and not just eliminated like with the budget proposal, the elimination, proposed elimination of the animal control officer and ACA, those two full-time positions, two employees are eliminated. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Casp. I'm a resident of Sacramento County, and I'm also opposed to the budget cuts with the animal control. And, you know, it, from reading the, the list, you know, especially the, the neuter program, like, I mean, if we cut, if that program is cut, then what, what's, what's going to happen? It's just going to be a lot of stray cats. And it just seems cruel also to cut down on the veterinarian emergency care for the animals. They're, you know, in some ways, they are the, the most vulnerable creatures in our county, and so I just want to be a voice for them. And, and, you know, as a taxpayer, that is the kind of thing I want my taxes to go to. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last card that I have from the public. Is there anyone in the public that did not turn a card in that would like to speak? Okay, thank you. With that, Mr. Gill, that's the last presentation, I take it? Formal presentation?
It is. If the board so wishes, we can also do a quick presentation on the CIP and the technology component. I think the CIP component, it's basically what you saw about a month ago, but since then, from Supervisor Serna, we got a question about a structure on discovery, and we have our Parks and Recreation Director here to address that, and if you so wish, we can have that.
Let's do it.
I'm not following, I accidentally tipped.
You're going to put that on eBay, weren't you, for the, for the department?
We're really streamlining, now you're.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, members of the board, Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks. Yes, to address the, the question regarding the Discovery Park picnic shelters, we have three picnic structures that are in need of replacement. One has been condemned and will need to be removed completely. To prepare, to actually address that, we are proceeding with two different grant programs to try and fund those replacements. I will be coming forward to you with an item next week requesting authorization to apply for grant funds from the Lower American River Conservancy for those picnic structures and some other grant programs. In addition, we could also use some Prop 68 per capita funding to fund that particular structure that needs to be removed. So we're pursuing both of those grant programs at this time.
Yes.
So I appreciate the time you've taken, Liz, to research some of these grant opportunities to, and I was kind of already aware of them, but I think it's important for the public and the, my colleagues on the board to hear about this as well. We're talking about a, about a $400,000 nut, right?
That is correct. For the one picnic structure is approximately $400,000.
Okay, and, and just so everyone is aware, this would be not just to replace it, but to replace it as a much more permanent structure, and one that's a more resilient, as we know, Discovery Park encounters flooding every year when the American and Sacramento come over into the, the park area. And my concern was to, in minimizing the amount of time that the public's left without that particular facility. that particular facility asset to enjoy in the lowest reach of our Parkway system that resides on the Parkway. And furthermore, I think, as I've said in the past, and many will understand, that lower reach is under some pretty unique pressure for a lot of different reasons, not the least of which is it's, you know, it's right in the middle of the city of Sacramento. That's a very well-used part of our park facility system. And what I hear you saying is that you're going to be seeking authorization to pursue a grant, which tells me that this could be, I don't know, you tell me, a year, two years away before we'd even start construction?
For the Lower American River Grant, Lower American River Conservancy Grant Program, the applications are due in July and is anticipated that the funding recommendations wouldn't come forward until the fall of this year with funding awarded in the beginning of 2020. The per capita funding, the state has indicated that they will give us an award late summer. The minimum amount of funding that will be allocated for the per capita funding is $400,000, ironically.
So we basically missed two summer seasons?
That would be correct.
Okay, so in light of that, and now I'm looking to address our County CEO, is there a way to use the expectation that, let's just say, we're going to be successful in some of these grant applications, that in the interest of meeting the intent that I've just expressed in terms of minimizing the amount of time the public's without those resources, is there a way to look at the CIP from the standpoint of, you know, bridging the expectation of the grant with CIP appropriation so that we can start construction this season and at least have it in place for next summer?
Absolutely, we could look to doing that.
I mean, I don't think I'm asking for anything unreasonable here. Again, Discovery Park, it's not Ansel Hoffmann, it's, you know, it's not a Rossmore, it's not a, you know, it's not like many of the assets that are upstream. And I really feel very strongly that the people that enjoy that park deserve to have every facility there to enjoy that is in our park plan. So that's what I would like you, Mr. Gill, working with Liz, to try and figure out is how we're going to at least shorten the duration without that facility by at least a year.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yep. I presume you're not going to have any presentation on this, so I can ask a few questions on the CIP?
Yep, we can.
Okay. Right, yes. And I'll just catch Liz while she's there and maybe, and I've talked to Mr. Gill about this, but, and I know I raised it in the context of hearing we had a few weeks ago, the, on the CIP, is that, I guess, going back to some historical work that was done, that the Parks Department hasn't been in the capital improvement program, it's been in a different category, and therefore we show zero capital improvement dollars except for grants that would fund certain improvements. Obviously, there's operations and maintenance as a part of that. And I think certainly to the circumstance that Mr. Serna referred to, but Liz talked to the bigger issue about replacement of facilities that, you know, may not be eminently in need of being removed, but certainly need to be repaired and replaced at some point in time. So I know you've been working, and now I guess I'd like to have you just share what you're considering because, again, as I've said, the irony isn't lost on me and I'm sure my colleagues that, you know, as we look at capital improvements in other areas, but our parks, which we have a major, major investment and major assets in this county, and we have zero CIP dollars in essence, at least from any other sources besides grants. And that's a tough way to go and rely on grants. It's great that you can do that, but, you know, that shouldn't be the only source of funding. So maybe you can just share with a little bit of history and where we think we may be going with some of the discussion for this board at a future date, so.
So a little bit of history on it is that back in the mid-2000s, there was a decision made for Parks not to participate in the Capital Construction Fund. There's a 2% that we charge for facilities and maintenance. And working with Liz and with Rob going forward this summer, we are looking at all the needs that we have in our park system. What are maintenance, what's construction, and then come up with what the financing would look like. Is it get back in the 2% game? If we have a future debt issue, is there something that we can do there? But we're trying to true that up and looking prospectively, make sure that Parks is a player in when we discuss capital improvement programs, be it general fund money, grants, whatever the source might be.
Okay.
So that's for a future date, for us to come back. Liz is looking at the list that we have and truing that up.
Okay, all right, that helps. Thanks.
Don, do you mind if I?
Oh, sure.
As long as Liz is there?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, because I don't think we've had this discussion since you became Parks Director, the fence at Ansel Hoffmann around the golf course that's falling down and I've been asking to have replaced for years. Also, the resurfacing of the road there.
Yes.
They're 50 years old. I don't know how, you know, I guess we'll have to have a discussion on, you know, priorities here, but I, and I guess this would be a good time to ask you if that kind of thing is going to be on your list for grant funding?
It is in our unfunded CIP and as we look at our per capita funding, I anticipate that we will actually get a greater amount than the $400,000 minimum. And so we would be able to evaluate all of our unfunded CIPs and prioritize those projects, yes.
Why do you anticipate we'll get more than $400,000?
Just based on historical, when we've had these other proposition bonds, we've received additional money over and above the minimum amount.
Okay, well, will we get a look at what is on, I know it's on the CIP list for Parks, but will we get a look at what you might put forward for this funding?
Absolutely, because I will need to bring a resolution to the Board for approval by November so that we can participate in that program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, go ahead, Don.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, good, okay. The, I wanted to ask, not so much Parks now, last year when we were talking about budget, we talked about libraries and there was going to be a library master plan that was going to help us.
Thank you, Liz.
Huh?
I was saying, thank you.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. And so I guess I'm curious where we are with that because now we're going into tough budget times and the conversation was around how we might fund, you know, some of the library unfunded CIP portions of all that and...
So we are waiting on comments from the Library JPA, Executive Director on getting our master plan out. We still anticipate to come back to the Board with the result, what that comes back with, and have a discussion with this Board, and I know that you then, so on the other JPA Board too. But again, looking at funding opportunity for libraries that will be a debt-type issuance, but we need to factor that in, where in library, where we would like to have future library construction. So we're not, we're not quite ready to have that conversation with you, but we would like to have that by fall.
Okay, so there's been work done on the master plan, is this not done yet? Is that?
Yeah, master plan, it's not done yet.
Okay, but work started?
Work, we, has not started. We're still waiting on some comments.
Okay, I understand, yeah, I understand.
We're still waiting on some comments, but we're going to press to get the comments in. And our whole strategy on that is that we do know, not only with library, Parks, I think the Board knows that the average year that our county facility was built was 1976. And a little bit of a joke, I mean, a lot of our employees that are working for us don't know what 76 was, they weren't around. So you can imagine the quality of the buildings.
High potential.
So we have to come back and have a discussion with the Board. What does that look like, what's the facility? Much broader than what you had asked, but what we're doing with our facilities is that we have a consultant going through all our buildings right now, looking at the mechanical, electrical, and if you will, the bones of the building, how are they faring? And where's that tipping point that is more, makes more economic sense for us to actually build something rather than keep putting money in maintenance? So we're working through that, that's a report that we want to bring back to the Board and have that discussion. And those takes years for us to get buildings built, but that's what we're working on.
So just without, you know, even for sure, you would anticipate you'd be back to us to fall with the library piece of that? Is that what you're anticipating?
I would like to get the library piece to you in fall. That's sort of the marker I have. And if we deviate off that, of course, every month I'll let you know where I'm at on it.
All right, thanks. Okay, a couple of quick questions about the CIP then. For transportation, I don't know, I thought Dan Schuman came in. I wanted to ask about a project that I think should be included in the CIP. Project number 87 in the Transportation section, Dan, it shows the Jackson Road at Sunrise Boulevard intersection project, but I didn't find anything in here for the Jackson Road at Bradshaw intersection, which is one that, as you're well aware, we've talked about it in the past, it's getting pretty crunched. And I know that, you know, Supervisor Kennedy's gotten some feedback on Bradshaw Road, as do I, and I get it east, west, north and south. So why would we have that at least in the CIP? And I know, you know, there's different aspects of what you put in there, but I'm curious, if we get it in the CIP, then it's not just trailing us, working with Caltrans, or are you trying to find money to?
Well, it's not. The project that's in for Sunrise at Brad, or Sunrise at Jackson?
Jackson.
Is in there mainly because we have Measure A funds allocated to that particular project and we're working with the City of Rancho Cordova. At this stage, we're just trying to kind of define a scope in there because it has a number of issues with three bridges and such. And so we haven't been able to progress that into any design process. For the Bradshaw intersection, we are starting discussions now with Caltrans about seeing what we can do in terms of more localized improvements to deal with some of the congestion at that intersection. We don't have a funding source like Measure A, there isn't a, Bradshaw is not in the Measure A program, so, but we would be looking, you know, towards other sources. But we are starting those discussions now with Caltrans to see what we can do, really kind of as an interim, as we're trying to move forward with the whole relinquishment of the Jackson corridor, which is still, you know, one to two years out. So we want to try to see what we can put together in the interim. That would provide some, at least, some relief at that intersection.
Okay, all right, so that explains why. Just one other project in transportation that's in here that I wanted to get a status on, it's outlined, but is the Douglas Road extension from Douglas Road to Excelsior around Symphony, you know?
We are initiating a, both a, more of a refined scoping effort on that, where we've, what's been defined through the, some of the environmental work out there in that general area was, as you know, is kind of a corridor, a larger swath of area that the road alignment could do and we now have design staff starting to look at refining that alignment so that we can, from that, we would be able to start pursuing an environmental document for roadway projects.
So do you anticipate we'd have the information, because we may hear some of those projects later this year that, you know, certainly would benefit, the circulation area would be, so do you think you would at least have some scoping that could inform the discussion by this Board? Because obviously, as we're looking at how we pay for infrastructure with, you know, yet unapproved and certainly undeveloped projects, that'll be a key piece in my view is the circulation out there, so.
Yeah, I would expect that later this year, we'll have more work done, that we can, you know, provide a little better definition to the type of improvements that we might be considering.
All right, thanks. Okay, thanks, Dan. I just have one other question, Mr. Chair, and that was Waste Management Recycling, the Kiefer Landville project there? I don't know if anybody's in the audience?
He was here earlier.
Doug's not down here, but Mike can handle that.
Okay, Mike, it's Project 10, page 608.
Page 608, pardon me.
Yeah, 608.
Yes.
Yeah, it looks like we're contemplating spending, I guess we've already spent half of the money in prior years. The, I guess I presume we have. I guess I was concerned, it says, "Due to migrating groundwater contamination." I thought we had controlled the plume and actually were either, it was either static or drawing it down, and now we're doing a larger, newer well, maybe relocated on consultant studies. And I know we haven't had a lot of discussion in recent years before this Board regarding that whole program out there. Obviously, I think we've had a pretty good regime for controlling groundwater contamination, but when I see expenditure of $1,200,000, it's pretty significant. And there was not a lot of definition, so that's why I didn't know if you were, I know Doug Sloan was here earlier today, but whether there was any, maybe you can get back to me on it.
I could do that, that's the best I could do. I don't have the specific detail on...
Okay.
We'll send the communication back to the Board.
Okay, and there's large expenditures, I know we're going to have some pressure on the solid waste fund for other reasons, and, you know, this is key, this is an asset which we have to manage properly and so forth, but, you know, when we spend $1,200,000 and it's not available for something else, and that fund isn't enterprise fund, so, anyway, we'll send some follow-up to the Board.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Okay, any other questions on the CIP issues? Technology Improvement Plan, is there any issues, concerns on the Board, or would you like to have a presentation? Nothing specific? Then, as I said, and we're going to take, by the way, the IHSS last because it's a different authority, basically, so we'll take care of the others. We have no more cards. It's now, I'm going to kick it one more time to Mr. Gill after hearing everything you've heard today. Would you like to make some closing comments? Is there anything that you heard today that you think might truncate our deliberations? Feel free to throw that out there, too.
No, it was a pretty good discussion and I think we are at that point to see what direction the Board wants to go into.
Okay, Board.
Can I make a?
Yes, sir.
Just in terms of process for this conversation, I would like, I think it would make sense to have each of us perhaps chime in with items on the proposed budget where we want to have a kind of structured conversation, perhaps even a separate vote on suggested changes to what has been recommended by the CEO. It's similar to what we've done in the past. There's no, there's no sub-agenda for this year, and that's why I'm kind of suggesting what I am.
I expected to do that, so Board members want to chime in, go ahead and punch in, and I'll call you as you punch in. Supervisor Serna?
Okay. So I think I've made pretty clear throughout the morning and early afternoon, my concern about the Healthy Partners Program, so not, I'm just putting it out there in terms of us to note it so we can have the conversation. So for me, it's going to be a conversation about Healthy Partners, a restoration of the proposed $500,000 cut. I've also made clear through some of my commentary, I think it's prudent for us to fully fund the $150,000 request by Weave for the children's program at Safe House. I had, I'm satisfied with the conversation that we just had on capital facilities at Discovery Park, so I don't think we need to necessarily park that as an item. I'd also like to have a conversation about the CalFresh question, about the $300,000 in cuts there. And those are, those are the three that come to mind immediately. I might, I might have one more, but I'll listen to my colleagues because they may be the same item.
I would just point out that I was listening.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Natoli.
Yes, Ms. Chair, in any way, at the juncture we get into this conversation, I'd like to have a comparison on the animal care budget of what was being recommended for restoration based upon the additional funding, because it doesn't align very well with page six of 18 in our recommended reductions, and so it's hard for me to kind of tell exactly. I mean, some of these are, the lines coincide. I'm very interested in full restoration for the community's pain neuter, which differs from the $62,000 that is now being recommended versus $110,000, so I'm very interested in that. But there are a couple of other things that relates to emergency care and some of the support services for our animals to help us, you know, achieve the 90% live release in our community as well as comments we heard today to address other issues that could be potentially significant on our shelter population. So I'm interested in that, and before we get into that, you know, I'll go through this and, but I'd like to maybe have Dave Dickinson or somebody so I can draw these lines here and be sure that the numbers that I advocate for is correct. I also am interested in the CalFresh discussion, recognizing that, you know, there's some, you know, reliance here on certainly on county workforce and certainly we have on our partners, but I would like to have that conversation, that Weave Safe House, I'm very interested in that. The Weave Safe House, I'm very interested in that allocation. Healthy Partners, also the HOT team. I would like to have a conversation about the restoration of some of the officers. May not be the full complement, but to look at restoring, at least as I've thought about it, since we had the conversation earlier today, maybe three positions for the, for the HOT team. And then also to have some conversation about adult protective services and the baseline, even if we had vacant positions, to retain some positions. I think based upon what I heard from Michelle and some of the flexibility she was trying to exercise in that realm, I'm concerned, though, that once we reduce them to some of the points that were made by colleagues here and certainly in response to questions, that you reduce the baseline, then it's always a fight to try to, to bring that back. And so it may be that we retain some positions. And let's see. We didn't have any discussion about it earlier, but the reduction in code enforcement, the, there was two positions there that are vacant that were reduced, and I would like to at least have somebody respond as to what impacts that means. Again, that's quality of life that we worked really hard over the years to rebuild and we certainly have all relied upon, that in respective districts to assist neighborhoods and in business districts and trying to address code enforcement issues. So that's, that's my short list.
Any others, board members?
Supervisor Frost.
I guess I'll chime in next. I, this is the first budget that I have participated in where we've had significant cuts. And so it's a little bit new to me. And my understanding from the meetings that I've had over the last several weeks is that over months, the staff have been working hard and looking back at their activities and their budgets to identify cuts that would do the least harm to the overall programs, that would minimize the amount of staffing loss, and that would minimize the disruption to their daily work. And so knowing that they know more about what they're doing in their individual departments, I'm, I've kind of tried to go with what they have advised and also with the understanding that we're making a lot of cuts that are, one time, I mean, this year, we have a lot of vacant positions that we can cut, but next year, we won't. And so we know it's not going to get better. It's, it's going to get harder over the next couple of years. And so we're, we're right here, right now, trying to minimize the impact of, of something that we have to do. And so that was kind of in the back of my mind as I was thinking about how I feel about the budget. And I think that NAV and Brit and, and all the executives have done an amazing job in trying to figure this out. I, I did have people, a few people, not that many, who came and visited me and who asked for help. We have some really exciting things going on out at Gibson Ranch. And there was a request to possibly, you know, consider some funding to finish off the, the wedding venue there. But I, in my conversations with, with NAV, my understanding is that if, if we get to the point where we run out of money there, we can kind of look at it at that time and try to see where we're at and, and what we can do. And I, and I, I also had a visit from Ms. Alverd, who, from Lily Putt, who has done an amazing job with placing children with families and, and creating, you know, really efficiencies in the foster care system and helping us, you know, put children, connect children with their families. I know that in her situation, she's, we don't really know about the Title IV waiver yet. So, I mean, we can't, I can't, I don't, I don't know how to advocate yet, Karen, around that, except to say that it's, it's on all of our minds in a big way. And we're hoping there's going to be replacement funding or that it's not, maybe not going to happen the way we anticipate it could. But, but that is on my mind. Weave, I, I met with Weave and I had the impression that, that they felt that they might be able to create some efficiencies. And they, they, they understand, they were, they get it, but this, you know, finding out, you know, a couple of days before you're going to get cut was putting a real hardship on a program that seems, that's very important to them. And so I was, I'm receptive to bridge funding for Weave and happy to have that, that I feel like I'm happy to have that conversation. I feel that the HOT team is vital, but the sheriff and their team made those decisions around HOT. But that, if, if we were, you know, I'm not, I, I think, I'm looking at, at everything else. Every other person who came to see me felt like they could figure it out or that they would be okay. The big thing that comes to my mind right now is making sure that we're letting people know what's coming as we move forward. So I, I guess my big priority would be having the conversation around Weave. And I, I feel like whatever we decide to change in here means we're going to have to pull something from somewhere else. And so I guess the question I'm going to have is if we do change something, where are you going to pull it from? That's going to be my question. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I also want to discuss the Weave contribution. They indicated to me in my meeting that 75,000, which was a 50% reduction, would tide them over, bridge funding, whatever you might want to call it, till they were able to replace it with private sector funding. So we'd like to talk about that. I would like to have a better understanding on the Elk Grove Animal Care contract, the 180,000. I didn't quite pick up what that would fund. Is it, is it just the spay neuter program, which I thought was a lot less? Or, I mean, it needs to stay in animal care since that's where the money came from, but what else would the money be spent on? And the HOT team is very important to me, but I respect the sheriff's decision to manage his budget, but I would like to have it on the list for September in case we, you know, have better numbers coming in from the state and property taxes. Those are my issues. And Ansel Hoffman, but that sounded like that's down the road a little bit.
Yeah, we'll bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. So hearing comments from anybody else, and I'll tell you where my priorities are, not that far off from many of yours. I'm interested in looking at restoration of Healthy Partners, though. It's a big nut, so I'd like to have a better understanding of where that money would come from. The restoration of Weave, I'm going to get to that in a minute. CalFresh, Supervisor Serna, what specifically, so that staff can really narrow it down?
Yeah, I believe that the, the number is 300,000, yeah, for the outreach.
For the outreach?
Yeah. I believe that was the same issue that Supervisor Nattoli expressed interest in.
Yes. The HOT team, I personally agree with Supervisor Peters and, you know, our directing the sheriff to do anything like that is kind of, we really don't have a lot of authority to do that to begin with, but I value the HOT team as much as anybody and, but I concur with your, and I'd like to hear about it in September, yes. So that's kind of a lot of what was covered there, but I do want to ask if a representative of Weave would like to come up, since five board members have now called you out by name, and give you an opportunity to answer any questions that there may be up here.
Hi, I'm Beth Hassett, the CEO of Weave, and thank you all for considering this. I really want to remind everyone that the kids that stay with us and the mothers are homeless, they're homeless people who happen to have somewhere safe to be. And the length of stay at our Safe House has doubled in the last three years because there's nowhere for them to go when they're leaving, which is sad, and it offers us the opportunity to have those kids there with us for at least two months most of the time. I also want to point out that these families are in the CPS system, many of them, and if they're not already, they're going to end up in it if they don't get the help they need. So I, I would love to have full funding for this program and I will go look for more funding to replace it because I really get that the way we're going, we're not going to have this money next year. And I know that. I just, I need time to apply for HUD funding, to look for donations, to do what I can to keep this going. But these are highly traumatized children who have an array of adverse childhood experiences when they come to us, and they need the safety planning and the counseling and the support that they get. And those parents need the parenting classes so that they won't continue to be abused or to turn into people who do harm themselves. So I urge you all to consider reinstating our funding, and thank you very much.
Beth, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So as has been noted in our, each of our comments, there's been reference to full funding, there's been reference to bridge funding. In response to the letter that you received, a bit of a form letter from Michelle Caes about the intent to defund entirely the 150,000 for this particular program, I did send out my own letter, making sure not to violate the Brown Act. I only copied one other member of this board, but since, because that's part of our Record of Communication for a Board Agendized Item, each member of this board does now have that letter in which I spell out some of the same concerns that you just mentioned, Beth. I'm glad to hear you acknowledge the fact that next year's going to be more challenging for all of us, for everything we've heard of, heard of all day, it's going to be more challenging. In terms of this concept of a bridge, the reason why I am interested in pursuing the full funding for this upcoming fiscal year is because I fear that we're going to have a very difficult conversation next year about any funding. And I think giving you a full year to plan for that possibility is, is much more fair than having you scramble for half or a portion of what you need for the year, based on the fact that this is such a critical, key service for a unique population, and it does certainly intersect with our intent to serve folks that are suffering homelessness, in large part in this case due to domestic violence. That was my rationale for the pursuit of the, the full funding in the fiscal year 1920 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Gill.
So if you can give us 30 minutes to huddle up with our department heads and go through the questions that you've asked, for us to come right back and talk about it.
Ms. Chair, just for your break. So on the animal care, though, this doesn't line up with the chart on cuts.
That's what we're going to work on.
So you're going to come back because again, I want to.
We're going to line it up.
Get somebody, oh, you'll line it up? Okay.
We'll line it up. Okay. All right. We'll be in recess for 30 minutes.